May please with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right off the bat, we have an item that's not really on the agenda, but it involves the staff of the Finance Department here with the City of Manhattan receiving an award. So I'd like for all of you to step forward to the microphone.
I got a letter, as I have annually now for some time, from the Government Finance Officers Association, and they are again presenting the City of Manhattan a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We call that our CAFER for this past year, and a lot of folks have done a lot to make sure that we do this disclosure. So it's a great document. It's a document that really gives a great history about what makes Manhattan tick and what raises funds and employment bases and everything else in the community. So, Bernie?
Well, Ron, I'm going to pass it off. Thank you very much. I want to let Rina step forward. Rina is kind of the, she is the person behind the CAFER. So, Rina?
Thank you very much, Bernie.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you like to say it in your words?
Thank you, everyone.
You want to get her picture?
Yeah.
This is, the award we just presented is for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And so, isn't that a tribute to the work that's done here? So, the next item on the agenda, or the only item on the agenda, is the, for this work session, is the Annual Revenue and Anticipated Expenses Survey and to discuss establishing a Risk Management Reserve Fund. And Bernie Hay and Director of Finance, it appears, will be our presenter.
I am your presenter this evening. We had a recent staff member leave and join the City of Topeka. She's an IT specialist. Her name is Casey Aiken, and was doing a great job actually running the entire AS400, the software and everything else goes with it, including utility billing. So, the backup is Hillary Padger and Amy Albert, who's also here, and then Daniela Woodman, who's our Budget and Operations Officer. She's going to stay because she'll keep me on track as we get into revenue issues. But Hillary and Amy may be going up and down, making sure utility bills are printed off the way they should. So you have me this evening, for better or for worse. The first item I'd like to talk about is the Risk Management Reserve Fund. It's a very short item, and in fact, I think Commissioners and us, there's an awful lot of questions or direction that you want us to research. Even the revenue survey shouldn't take an awful lot of time. It should be pretty straightforward. On this Risk Management Reserve Fund, it comes from KSA 122615, and it's kind of an obscure fund, but it basically says this, I just make a summary, that you, as the governing body, and with, of course, the concurrence and the direction of the city manager, you can pay any costs related to uninsured risks. And those uninsured risks, because I had a long talk with our Assistant City Attorney regarding this, what we're really looking at is deductibles, because those are the things that we would have to pay anyhow that aren't covered by insurance. And we do this by resolution. The resolution, then, prescribes how this money is going to be spent. I think it's pretty straightforward, and Rachel Zinger and our conversations didn't seem to think this would be a long resolution by any means if the Commission chooses to move in this direction. Any expenditure that is made from this to pay deductibles or anything else that might not be insured has to have the approval of the City Commission. So we just can't willy-nilly take monies and be moving it around. It takes your concurrence if indeed we're going to pay some uninsured loss. And finally, it has to become part of the annual budget. And it's kind of unusual, because most reserve funds, including the Capital Improvement Reserve, which if you'll recall, when we started that, we made a commitment, the city manager made a commitment to have that fund published every year. This one has to be published as well, in this part of the city budget, and so it's a little bit unusual in that regard. If we look at deductibles, and I've got Kathy here, because Kathy, our Human Resource Director, actually runs the Risk Management Program. And so I kind of conferred with her as well, and Kathy wanted to get up here and make this presentation, I think, but I kind of beat her to it. But here's the areas I think we're really looking at, possibly inland marine, where we could raise the deductible, and then our whole liability setup. I'm not sure the property is going to be something we want to mess with, and you notice the amounts, the deductibles are considerably higher, because the frequency of those kind of losses is obviously rather small as well. If the fund builds up the way it could, perhaps we could move in that direction as well. And indeed, this is what it looks like. From the General Fund, from the Water Fund, from the Wastewater Fund, we budget for liability and property insurance from those three accounts. And the idea would be that whatever we don't spend, we would move into that reserve as part of the resolution with your concurrence as a commission and with the, I think, the concurrence and direction of the city manager as well. And after five years, we anticipate we would have roughly $170,000. And now, this comes from the history back, so these are actual numbers, had this reserve been in place 10 years ago. So after five years, we would accumulate that amount, and after 10 years, the amount is considerably more, over half a million dollars for uninsured loss. And of course, the idea would be that we would raise deductibles as this fund builds up to a point where city manager is comfortable and your Human Resource Director is comfortable, and then I think we could save considerable money. I've been doing enough research on this idea of what optimal deductibles are, and there's no question, the higher you raise it, the lower your insurance cost, for obvious reasons, because the insurance companies won't have to pay those first dollars. That's really it in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to respond. Any questions? Or perhaps Kathy might want to respond to some?
It doesn't seem like a lot of money for over a five-year period. Is it really enough to make a difference?
Well, I think like anything else, Mayor, it depends on what the losses are that we're paying.
Sure.
That we typically cover, because we do pay, I don't know, I haven't really talked to Kathy, but I think we've paid a number on property issues that we paid the first dollar.
On property, yes.
On property. But I think, I think by and large, depending, obviously, some of those amounts for the five-year and then the 10-year could be reduced based on annual payments that we do make.
Okay.
But I still think there's a, there's a bright spot for this that would give us a chance to really go back and reconsider how we do that whole risk management setup with deductibles.
And it's enough that you think the insurance companies will recognize it, and...
Well, we would have to contact the insurance company and then decide to raise the deductibles. And I can, I can assure you that raising a deductible is going to lower our annual insurance cost.
Premiums.
It absolutely will.
Okay. Thank you.
When we had the selection for the insurance company...
Yes.
There were some charts in there, and I don't, since I don't have them with me, I didn't memorize them, but there are various levels of deductibles that are generally accepted by these insurance companies. So if you compare this with the next tier up, you know, if you look at your, your own personal insurance, there might be a level for $10,000, there might be one for $50,000, you know, just on car insurance alone. So do we know what that next level is already and what the cost reduction is for each one of those tiers as we go up?
No, we don't, Commissioner. We haven't gone that far, and I hate it to go that, I, it would make it, it'd be, it would have been a good presentation to make.
Yeah.
But I wanted to see if there was an appetite to move in this direction to begin with before we go too far. And I think the next step is exactly that, to get with our insurance carrier and say, let's, let's see where these deductibles land and what it will do for our annual cost. My judgment is, at least what I've read so far, that I think the savings are going to outstrip the amount of money that we have to basically set aside and reserve. So on an annual basis, I think we're going to save a significant amount of money if we do raise, start raising these deductibles on various lines.
Well, the, I don't mind giving this a shot. The only thing I would caution against is when the insurance company designs this for the city, they've done a risk analysis already based upon historical pattern. These guys have been with us for a while. So they say, the probability of this happening is X. The severity of this occurrence is Y, and therefore, here's your risk cushion.
Yes.
So what we are saying, in essence, is that we believe that the probability of occurrence or the risk, either one or both, are below what you say they are, and therefore, we're going to self-protect. And we can then raise the deductible, because if, if this occurs at a current deductible rate, we'll end up paying that. We think that it won't occur either as often or severely, so we're willing to take that risk between, say, $150,000 deductible and $200,000 deductible.
The wisdom, I think, behind this reserve fund, at least if you follow the statutes, is any of those types of moves, because certainly, we don't want to put the city in any kind of risk. But any kind of change that would be made, and that can be spelled out as part of the resolution, would have to have concurrence on the part of the City Commission.
Right.
So I don't think it's something that we would just go out and put the city at risk. Anecdotally, we do something very similar in our Self-Inured Health Fund. We have a specific and we have an aggregate, and those amounts, we know where that ceiling is. And so every month, as I get the reports, and Kathy as well, on our loss history for that month, medical and dental...
Right.
We keep a, we keep a graphical chart of this, I do, and I know where that line is in terms of where that specific and aggregate kicks in. So in some respects, we know what we have to do in terms of raising rates and raising the cost of that health insurance for all of our employees.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea to take a look at this and other kinds of things we do at the city all the time. So, you know, when you come back, if you have this difference between what this tier represents and what the, another tier represents in the savings to the city, that'd be a great first step.
Good. We can do that.
I want to be sure I understand, my understanding is that the funding for this will come from savings. In other words, you budget each year for the deductible. If the deductible's not used, what's left over gets swept into this fund. Is that correct?
It is. And Commissioner Butler, I would have been so disappointed if you hadn't picked up on that, because I know where you're going with this. Indeed...
Okay, so that sort of answers a little bit of what Commissioner Donson said, that the insurance companies are probably overcharging, or there wouldn't be anything left over. So I don't have a problem with it. I think this is, this is a great plan. I'm in support of it. The second thing, though, that's not said here when we talk about how it can be used, I know we've had occasions in the past where there's been incidents where the city would like to compensate somebody, but the insurance wouldn't cover it for various reasons. And this might allow us to do that. I'm not talking about huge amounts, but we might have some, you know, some smaller amounts. I think one time there was a, you know, some damage to some property when we were doing maintenance on points, and the stormwater got down in a basement, and I think that got covered out of the general fund. But this would give us some flexibility to handle some small cases like that.
Well, it does. It does. Any, any loss that is not covered by insurance would be eligible for this fund.
And then the third question is, well, let's say that in 10 years, this thing builds up to, you know, it's got $600,000, $700,000 in it. Is there a way to write this so it's not totally fenced? Like, some other emergency could come up, and the city manager might want to abscond with some of that money and move it, okay? Maybe the term "abscond" is bad, but, but let's say we have to move it, you know, adjust it, like, this balance is too low and this one's now excessive. Would there be the ability to move some of that, to balance it out so that, you know, the books look good?
No.
No.
If, if the fund is no longer needed, or if the amounts get too great, they go back to the various funds from which they came for the purpose that they were contributed to to begin with. This is strictly insurance-related.
Okay, so you can't level funds, so that, that's fine, too. I just wanted to know if that was possible here. Thanks.
I think this plan seems reasonable, and they already, some of the other Commissioners asked some of the other questions I already had. A couple that I still have that you might be able to help me with. This KSA statute, how long has it existed? And if you don't know off the top of your head, has it been like some time?
It's been a...
That's what I thought.
It's probably, it's probably as old as I am, Commissioner.
That's, I, that's what I thought, but, well, not as old as you are, but I wanted, I wanted to make sure it'd been around a while. So how, I guess my question is, is why didn't we move to something like this sooner?
You know, that's a good question. This sounds really, really odd, and I, maybe it is part of getting old, but I have these epiphanies in the middle of the night, and I start thinking about things like this, and then I go back and I check the statute books and find things that I think should be there, and indeed, found out that they are there. I can tell you, there are very few cities...
That was my next question.
Very few that do this. In fact, I do not know of a one that does this. But it seems to make sense, and given, given the fact that we're not, we're not going to try to, you know, change the playing field and make the city more risk, as a risk taker, we're certainly not doing that. It just seems that, given the longer term, that this could be a helpful fund to have to hopefully lower future costs. And I think you're going to hear a little bit of that as we unveil the 2019 budget process.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
I think the other thing that it could help do is bolster some support for our general reserves. So, and normally, if we have a situation that's not covered by insurance, or we have a higher deductible than, and we don't have, and our budgeted funds are low because our revenue hasn't been there, and so we have, that's the purpose, we have a general reserve fund. So having these insurance-specific reserves would certainly be interpreted as a plus from something that isn't draining the general reserves.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this, but I was curious as to if anybody else had it, and you already said nobody does. So we would be kind of taking a risk in being one of the first ones also.
Well, I'll do, I will...
I just want to make sure that...
I can begin to contact some of my counterparts, especially in the larger cities, because that's where I think the, I think the sophistication would be there, if it's being done at all. But I don't know of any Commissioner, any other cities right now that are doing this.
Is it because they haven't thought about it, or is it because they've studied it and decided not to go that way? Do you have any...
I don't think so. I'm guessing they just didn't have any of these two-in-the-morning epiphanies about, you know, what could we do to lower insurance costs?
Yeah, well, I, I think it's good to look at it a little bit closer and see what we can do with it. It doesn't sound like a bad idea from the presentation and from the questions that were asked.
I'll work with the city manager and make sure that he's comfortable with the resolution, and then if he wants, we can push it forward at a future meeting.
The only maybe negative thing I can see where, you know, if you have money left over on your insurance fund, it gets swept into this reserve and its box. Under the current system, it just goes in the general fund, and it increases that balance. So it could have a minor adverse impact, depending upon the amount...
This is, this is where I thought you were going, Commissioner Butler. And, you know, when I, when I tell you, and you will see, perhaps you already have, that our beginning fund balance to begin 2018 is not what we were anticipating, this would only add to that if we would have swept monies into this reserve fund. Part of our dilemma, I think, Commissioners, before we get into the, to the revenue survey aspects of this, there's, there's all sorts of good reasons why we ought to be establishing some policies and some idea of reserve funds, even if at times, on an annual basis, because of trying to keep the mill levy down and property taxes more flat, that we can't make a contribution to some of those reserve funds. But there's a whole bunch of good things that can come and have come for cities that have established those types of funds. And there, in that case, there are many cities that have done that, and I think they're much the better for it by doing that. We've not moved in that direction, simply be, except for the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, which really was kind of an afterthought, because we had clear, had monies that were, that we could put into that fund from the downtown mall sale. And that's what precipitated that reserve fund, and it did help build the new facility that we have to the north of City Hall, or part of City Hall now.
I think the other thing I would just comment on is that although we haven't done specifically in these insurance pools, we have similar type of reserve funds in our workers' comp as well as our self, our self-insured funds, where we have, are required to have these large reserves, our health insurance fund. And part of that, as, as we've seen with industry's rates, has been, there's been less competition in the, among the companies offering it. So the other hedge that the reserve funds will have is, you know, it may not achieve the original savings that we were expecting, but it may also soften those premium increases for, if the, if the savings don't occur by going larger deductibles. So it provides a source of revenue to, to pay that larger premium as well.
And then one final question on the way this fund would get filled. Let's just say hypothetically, at the end of a year, you've got $100,000 left. Does all of that have to go into that reserve?
No.
Or can the city manager make a recommendation that, you know, maybe because we've got something else short, that instead of putting all 100K in there, we just put 75?
Absolutely. The city manager can make that...
And that would mitigate the downside of that.
Yes.
I basically think that it makes sense to have a savings account and a reserve fund translates into a savings account. Even a small one, that would help reduce some premiums and reduce the dings to the insur, that, you know, the claims to the insurance company would make sense to me. So I'm generally supportive. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, now we'll get into the, the fund stuff. We put on this annual revenue survey, for those of you that have been on the Commission for a while, for some time, we used to take a much more macro, micro view, because we would, we would actually publish every fund in the general fund and show the statutory requirement, show the history of every single line item of all 162, 64 different line items within the general revenue. We kind of stopped that, because as you're going to see, the majority of those simply do not impact the general fund. They help, and they're important, and we do those for reasons that ostensibly make the, the whole general fund stronger. But what we're going to look at tonight are really some specific things, and, you know, I'd be interested in your feedback as to how we proceed as we begin to look at work sessions to talk specifically about the expenditures that we're facing in 2019. But tonight, it's really about the revenues and some of the issues that I think that we have. This is a reminder, this is a small one, that roughly 65% of our total budget, almost $149 million, comes from these five revenue sources. And it's just an ongoing reminder how important these five sources are: beginning cash balances, property taxes, sales taxes, franchise fees, and the transfers we make from other funds, the sales tax fund, and from the water and wastewater fund, those three especially. This is the beginning cash as it looks at the property tax funds. Now, I passed out tonight something that is new, and you see a bunch of arrows, both blue and red on it. You're going to see some of the red ones here in a moment. I want to tell you as a commission that the beginning cash balances of all of these funds that we have for the city are in good shape. There's, there's a number of red arrows, and in fact, there's a couple on the Aggieville and downtown BIDs. But those are rather insignificant. They're not earth-shattering. They won't make any kind of budgetary difference to the, to those two BIDs themselves. And then some others that, that are smaller and simply won't become a problem either. But as you look at the property tax funds, these are the ones that we really pay attention to. The city manager really hit the nail on the head a minute ago, and he was talking about the worker comp and the health reserve funds. Our ending cash balance in 2017 for the general fund was a little over 1.5 million. It looks, you notice now, it's almost 1.8. And what we did, because we had a very healthy worker comp reserve fund, was to not make those last payments on the worker comp side out of the general fund and move that money over to general operating, to give us a little bit of a push-up. We budgeted $2 million, and we obviously did not hit that. This happened also in 2014, almost identically the same thing, and we ended up with a beginning cash balance in 2014 of about the same amount, a little bit less, about 1.75 million. Here's the three red arrows that I'm concerned about. The sales tax fund, lesser, but obviously, when you have additional sales tax money, it gives you some options, as Commissioner Butler pointed out, that you can move monies around, and it gives the city manager much more flexibility. The two we're going to talk about tonight are the general operating fund and the bond and interest fund, because those two were simply not where we need to be. And the problem is that the revenues that accompany these funds, especially the general operating fund, are flat. I don't know if you opened up your emails of late, but you saw the sales tax per February, and the only comment I could make was darn, because it just simply didn't happen that we are on an upswing. And right now, it appears that we're going to be very similar to what we had in 2017. Right now, we're a little bit of, a little over 2% under where we were even a year ago. This, I hope, isn't too hard to read, but it does show you the end of 2017, and I want to take you through just a couple of revenue items, and I've checked those. The first are licenses and permits. These are building permits, and I want you to look, as you go across from 2016 to 15 to 14, you can see that we simply didn't hit what we were in building permits. Building is slowing down. And I can't, that's up, you know, I, you, we ought to look to our public works director, our fire chief, our community development director, or others to say, what's the cause of this? I don't know. But from the dollar standpoint, to me, it's alarming. And you'll see this again momentarily. The other one was service and sales, which is down about $400,000 from '16. Those are administrative fees. Those are the fees that we get from bond issues that are precipitated, at least in part, by building permits. So as development is made and as bond issue specials are, are put together and benefit districts created, we get an administrative fee off those bond issues. It's about 3.5%, I believe, is what it is. I think that's right. Not right above, but I think it's 3.5%. And, but it adds a lot of revenue, and of course, it's really intended to pay for a lot of the, the backdoor work that most in the community never see, not only in terms of management and what they do, and as well as my fellow staff members, but what the Finance Department, Rena, Rena Neal, does in putting these special assessments together and making sure everything works. And then the one that is perhaps most troubling, fines and forfeitures. And if you look just at fines, we are down considerably to what we have had in the past. I talked to Director Schoen, and I, I, I think he would tell you that there's been a little bit of a different direction on how they're policing in the community, which I am fully supportive of, I understand. supportive of, I understand. And he kind of indicated that we probably just over-budgeted fines and that the focus of the department is for a different type of policing right now. I can't go into detail because I don't have, I don't have any idea what that is. But this is an issue. Now, before I go any further, when we budget, there's no crystal ball. There's no way you can do this really well. But I want to point out something that I know the city manager's pointed out time and time again during the budget process. When we finally get to the public hearing in late July or August, we're budgeting for almost 18 months out. And we're looking ahead, trying to figure out what revenue is going to come in. Well, if you look at this and you look at fines and forfeitures as an example, the past 50 would say, we ought to be able to budget around 1.5 million. But in reality, it didn't materialize. Neither did the building permits, neither did the administrative fees that we get off of bond issues. The two that are more predictable, transfers and other revenues, and that relates directly to moving the health fund that was in the general fund, the health expenses, to the employee benefit fund. And in order to make that work, we moved all the sales taxes that were associated with those transfers to the employee benefit fund as well. So that's why those two big drops that are circled happened. That was a decision, you may recall commissioners, and I think it was a wise decision, to move those health expenses over to that employee benefit fund. So that drop there, both on the revenue and the expense side, hopefully is self-explanatory. The three checkmarks are problematic.
Before you move on really quickly.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Which, on the revenues, which one of these funds represents revenues from Parks and Rec Department?
Oh, it'd be service and sales.
Okay. That's all I needed to think of.
Actually, Commissioner, it's probably, let's see, it's probably more the transfers and other revenues than it is the service and sales. Because I'm just thinking the service and sales specifically in the budget is for a small category. Then we have all of the park and rec, and we have those broken out by, for instance, the discovery center and the animal shelter and those. But I think those fall under other revenues. So my mistake, sorry. 85% of our general fund revenues, again, tonight, we're focusing on the general fund and the bond and interest fund, so I hope you bear with me, because everything else is in really reasonable shape.
Just wait just a minute here.
Do you want me to go back, Commissioner?
Yeah. So the big ones on here, I mean, we still have a, for 2017, we still had a positive revenue over expenditure.
Yes.
But just in transfers and other revenue, we had like 2.5 million dollars less than we did.
And that was specifically those sales taxes that followed that expense circle below that went to the employee benefit fund.
And then the way we primarily made up for that was a 2.5 million reduction in the general fund, general government.
Yes.
That's down about 2.5.
And that was the general services amount.
Right.
Of general government that was transferred to the employee benefit fund, the health insurance.
So that's the, besides all the others that are 200 and 400,000, and then the 500,000 bump up, the 2.5 million's the one that really creeps.
Yeah, but again, it was, it was both the revenue and the expense didn't really have an effect, Commissioner, on what we're talking about this evening. But it does look odd, and it does raise an eyebrow unless you realize that both the expense and the revenue followed to a different fund.
Okay. So then, for future reference, and even if it's just, and you, we might do this as we get in budget discussions further, so bear with me, because this is my first time doing this.
Sure.
For future, is there a way that we can, because Parks and Rec is recognized as its own expenditure down there at the bottom.
Yes.
I would be interested in, as a whole, so discovery center, sunsets zoo, all of that, programming, how much revenue Parks and Rec brings in as well, separate from the transfer and other revenues line item, because I think that's what's confusing me.
And we do have, we do have other financial reports that I think you get as a commission.
Right, and even in the packet, the next to the last page is the general operating, which breaks it down. But the budget book itself has all those delineated programs.
Got it, okay.
With revenues and expenses.
Perfect, thank you, sorry.
And this report, Commissioner, is really something that, it does show, as, we've kept it for 2018 on a month-to-month basis, so when you see January or February's financial report, it's just for those two months. And I understand what you're saying, but to break it out even more might be overkill because it is evident in some other reports.
Okay, thank you.
You're more than welcome. So 85% of our general fund revenues come from these following nine sources. And it's kind of a busy chart, but I want to underscore that because 85% from just nine sources, it tells you where some of our issues might be and some of the stress points that we're going to have as we move both to 2018 and then start to budget for 2019 as well. And again, you can, you can see as you move down, now it's a little bit more evident. Franchise fees, you know, we've clearly over-budgeted that compared to what actually came in, and that is one of those maddening things. I've been looking around and talk, there's some cities, some of the larger cities, that audit, they provide, or there are companies out there that will audit the utilities that provide franchise fees, West Star, Kansas Gas, and go over their books to see if we're getting the franchise payments that we should be. Some of this, I think, is attributed to changes in behavior. We know building permits are down, and I think that both telephone and internet has changed dramatically, and those franchise fees, I think, are reflective, or that decline is perhaps predictable and a little bit reflective of what's happening in terms of society. But as you move on down, you see the building permits, you see what we budgeted, you see what actually came in in 2017, the same with those administrative fees I mentioned. And then again, municipal court fines, there is no doubt that we really missed the mark and over-budgeted municipal court fines for 2018. And there's little doubt in my mind that we're going to come anywhere close to 1.2 million in revenue.
Is there anything, what can you do with regard to franchise fees?
Well.
And do you have, you would have the information on how much each company paid.
Well, they tell us, yes.
Per year, and you'd be able to compare that for the last couple of years.
That's what these auditors do. They actually go and they contact, they look at all of our books and they contact the companies themselves to see and to make sure that we're getting those fees that we are supposed to under our franchise agreements.
Yeah, but, so that would be an added expense to the city to employ an auditing firm.
I can't tell you what it would cost at this point, Mayor, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I haven't even talked to Ron about this, because I'm not sure that that's the problem. It simply could be that with growth in the city slowing down, building permits down, that we're seeing some ramifications of this through franchise fees. But I think it might be something we want to look at, and knowing that other cities indeed have had those audits of those franchise utilities, it might be worth doing.
I think it might, we are dealing with probably the same utility companies.
Yes, most of us are.
And it would be productive to probably talk to those other cities about what they have found through their audits.
Yes.
So that we can kind of get a handle on it. But I don't, I view our city as still growing, and we're quite a bit bigger now than, you know, we were before. And it's not just a one-time franchise fee that they pay, it's an annual one. So the fact that that's down is a concern, and I agree with you. And I think we ought to take a cursory look at it and just see if there's something that we ought to dig, that you ought to dig into further.
Sure.
Yeah, and I would like to do that to the state sales tax amounts also.
So Bernie, I have a few questions on this.
Mm-hmm.
I have a lot of questions, actually. It seems like we've over-projected maybe on several of the line items, and it could be because of the enrollment decrease at K-State. I think that's probably had a big impact. When I look through your big binders that you give us, the population is now 40, 54,000. It was 56,000. In 2011, it was 53,000. So we're kind of going backwards a little bit. So I just want us to be cautious as we move forward. Some of my major concerns are if the sales tax revenue keeps going down or even stays flat, we're in trouble because we have two major initiatives that are dependent on sales tax, not to mention the rest of the operating expenses that we have. For, I wanted to know how street maintenance would be impacted. Has it been impacted, Rob, at all from the sales tax revenue being down a little bit?
As I recall, I think we're still on target.
Okay, because I just don't want us to have to pick up the rest of it. And Parks and Rec, we're depending on those facilities opening up in 2020 or 2021 or whatever date that is. But if we don't have enough collections, if people are not spending money for us to collect, that's a huge concern for me. So I want us to be a little bit more realistic in that. The municipal court fees, you know, even though it says 1.2 million, I hope we are realistic on how that looks also in the future. I think sometimes if we're overestimating, I'd rather be extremely conservative than not, because even in the past, it may have come close, but it was still, I mean, 2017 was 735 something. For all of them, it was a little less. And I wasn't sure why on building permit fees, in 2017, it was 280, I'm sorry, 382,000 compared to 2018 budget where we anticipated 500,000.
If you look, but see, again, Commissioner, this is one of those, that's one of these dilemmas of budgeting so early in the process. Because when we're looking at building fees, the presumption is that it's going to pick up.
Right.
And we don't know. Here's the other, here's the other dilemma, and I think you five commissioners know this all too well. We, there's no question that we over-budgeted on municipal court fines. There's no question. And that just simply, I think, you know, I'm not sure.
It could be a variety of reasons. I'm not going to say it's just.
But remember, every time we lower these estimates, if we're going to beat expenses, unless you're looking at really beginning to cut back on general fund expenses, and remember, 2/3 of that are employees, unless you cut back, the only other revenue source you have to make up these more conservative estimates is property taxes. And these nine, remember, these nine sources here provide 85% of the revenue for that general fund.
Right. Well, knowing what I know now, I just think we need to proceed with extreme caution.
I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner.
More extreme than ever before. Unless K-State's enrollment starts to pick up, if they start losing even more, we're going to feel it even more.
Sure.
And that includes Fort Riley. So I just want us to be very prudal, not that we overspend and do all of that, but I think we need to be very mindful.
You'll notice, you'll notice below that too, and here's another one of these things that's maddening, is we didn't over-budget, I don't think, on special liquor taxes, but look how flat they've been.
Right.
And that, that, that may be, that may be more tied to the decline in enrollment at K-State than anything, as far as why that is flat. Transfers, they've stayed about where we think they're going to. I have some reluctance, and I'm sure our city manager does, to say that we can make up more transfers out of our utility funds in lieu of raising property taxes. I'm not sure, because you can't do that in perpetuity, obviously. We might, it might be an option for 2019. And I think that I've talked to Hillary, and we have a fairly sophisticated way of looking at our different aspects of those transfers. We do a payment in lieu of taxes, we do a franchise fee charge against the utilities, and we do an administrative charge to cover the overhead of finance staff and city management and everything else. And the process we go through, I think, is well thought through, and there is some leeway there that we can raise that. But we can't raise it as much as we see some of these revenue drops here. And so, and I don't think we want to do that, we certainly can't do it year after year, at least in my estimation, we can't, we should not.
I want to comment on this municipal court thing. I'm not a big believer that any city should finance its operations by getting traffic tickets, you know, at all. But what I find interesting is you go back to 2015, you got $1 million in fines, and then you go up to 2017, it's $300,000 less. So does that mean everybody's behaving better in town, or are we just not enforcing things as much as we should? And I think that's the question that's got to be asked of, you know, I think the code office is enforcing quite well from the emails I get. But I'm wondering, you know, is RCPD overlooking that? Are we not writing the traffic tickets? I mean, that seems to be, either we're doing a great job of policing and we've changed everybody's bad behaviors, or we're not doing the enforcement at the same level that we were in 2015.
And I think you see some of those trends. I think the Director Shown would say that there was probably a period there where they were giving more warnings than actual citations, for whatever reasons than in philosophy that they were reporting. You know, one of the things that I wanted to point out relative to calendar, which is one of my favorite subjects, because we're still budgeting by horseback timelines. And really, we could walk to Topeka many times and back. It's just ridiculous that we have to pass a budget in the middle of the year. The state doesn't do it, you know? State goes into extra sessions to pass theirs, you know, before the new one even takes effect, and we have to do it six, six to seven, eight months in advance and look at those revenues. So court's a good one, so you see that million 84 in 15, and as I recall, I think that was either steady or trending upwards previously from that. And so there you had, you know, that was really when we set the 16 budget, we were going off 14 actuals. So when we set 2017, we were going off that 15 actual and year-to-date as to what those were. And even, even the $16 were down, but they were comparable. So, you know, nobody could have seen that big presumption coming to drop clear down to 735. So when we were making that 1.2 assessment for 18, we saw that million, and we were doing well towards 985. So that's, that's a tough one to kind of, to get at when you kind of miss those, and we will go back in and reanalyze to see what the trend lines are and what's causing some of these irregularities. And those are some of those issues that we have. And then, of course, we can always control on the expenditure side. But that's, that's one where, you know, if we could ever convince the folks in Topeka to allow us to budget a little bit tighter based on actuals, that would be more preferable.
I was going to say, the municipal court, when I think, I understand we over-budgeted. That's one thing we can look at closer, even on law board, but there are other aspects that we don't have as much control over, like sales tax and building permits and things of that sort that are, that I'm extremely concerned about. So I think we need to look at that. And sometimes you don't know what you're going to get from the state or federal level as far as mandates. I have a huge concern if they start saying you need a security guard at every school. So I don't know who would fund that. Would that be school board? Would that be city and county? Who would that be and when would that come? So that adds to our budget if they go that route. So those are few things that I think give me heartburn when I think about our budget and thinking about RCPD budget at the same time.
And now we're going to have two gems of our own that aren't necessarily school board, that we might have to pursue security at some of our other facilities. Two years, it's a five years, okay.
One of the things we may want to do here, Bernie, just to introduce a little bit more surety to ourselves is, you know, this past year, we had around 4,000 troops deployed twice. And that's a, you know, if you believe the pamphlet, that's the economic.
that's the economic impact on Manhattan Junction City and the Flint Hills. That then tells you something about the distribution of the pay-in allowances and other kind, and contracts and so on. So if you chart that across the, let's just do it across sales tax, for example. And if you see, maybe with some kind of a histogram, that it says, okay, well, for the past four years, we've had these deployments. And it probably lags a little bit. In other words, you know, they're gone from June to October. So, in July, it goes down and doesn't pick back up till November. But I, I think if you took a look at that, and then we get some information based upon the best information they have at Fort Riley, to the extent that deployments are less than twenty seventeen, then we would have some assurance that our sales tax would be greater than twenty seventeen. All of the other things are relatively uncontrollable. I mean, there is some trending information on internet sales tax and things like that, or the lack thereof, or the lack of sales tax revenue as a result of the non-collection. But those are largely out of our control. But that other one, we might be able to get some insight from.
Sure. To piggyback off of Commissioner Dotson's question, how long have we been getting sales tax revenue from the state for Amazon?
Have we been?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, how long have we been getting that?
Oh, Commissioner, I don't know, because Amazon is not specifically listed. But I would say, based on our compensating use, and I know Commissioner Butler has seen that, that linear chart that I did, those compensating use internet sales taxes have been growing up dramatically and are now much higher on a month-to-month basis, or year-to-year basis, than the sales taxes, which are fairly flat.
So was that accounted for in the twenty eighteen budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think the Amazon, Amazon's had a presence in Kansas for a long time. There was a one or two-year period after they closed their southeast Kansas facility, then they reopened one in the Lenexa area. So, there was a couple of years where maybe they didn't have a presence and weren't charging that sales tax.
Well, I had mentioned already that there are one hundred and fifty-four other revenue sources. And you've probably noticed that in your general, in your budget, looking at general fund revenue. But the only way those fifteen percent of those, that number, impact the general fund is in some large combination, and that just simply doesn't occur. Here's the problem we have, and what I want to spend a little bit of time talking about in terms of the general fund and where we're at. If we look at these six revenue line items and compare them to actual, to the twenty seventeen budget, you can see that we basically were down one point two million. And there wasn't much of an upswing based on our ending cash balance, as you noted, that, that made up any difference here. If we translate this to the twenty eighteen budget, you can see what the projected shortfall looks like for those six revenue sources. And so the picture doesn't improve at all. It doesn't get quite as bad, but it's bad in terms of where we think we're going to end up. In short, what I'd be saying is, we probably could expect to end up with another one point five, perhaps a little bit lower, as an ending cash balance in twenty eighteen unless things really pick up. And if these revenue sources don't, don't pick up as well. We'll show you in a minute on the expenditure side, because your city manager has done an awfully good job of keeping all departments kind of in check. And in twenty seventeen, one reason why we didn't really feel that burden that makes it look really more grim on, on a PowerPoint is the fact that we underspent our twenty seventeen budget by ten percent. Historically, I, I think that Ron has always issued cautions, especially as the year ends in fall of each year, to be cautious on how we spend and not to go out and just think we have extra budget to buy anything that hasn't been bought. And we've always underspent our budget somewhere around five percent. Ten percent was a little bit unusual, but thank goodness we did, because it made the numbers not look quite as bad as what they were. So, for twenty eighteen, given what we know right now, just after two months, it's possible that we could end up in a very similar situation as we proceed for the twenty nineteen budget. If we then go ahead and budget some of these changes, instead of one point two million, dropping that back to nine hundred thousand or so, then we're either going to have to cut expenditures by an equal amount, three hundred thousand, or we're going to have to find another revenue source, either raising property taxes or to make other transfers from utilities. Which again, I'm, I'd have to look at the city manager for his wisdom, but I'm reluctant to do that, because you can do it for one year. But, you know, we get into a habit of doing that, and it portends bad things down the road. If I continue just a little bit further, well, I put those stupid check marks in there, I'm not sure why, but we already covered, covered all of those. This is what we look like, and, and I want you, if you would, just take a minute and notice, I put the sales taxes below this and put the property taxes above it, because you can see what's been happening to property taxes. They've increased. And now some of this, this new improvements, which are properties that have never been taxed before. But obviously, you know, the message is that the mill levy is, continues to creep up in the general fund. And, you know, I, I've talked about in my younger day, when I was here, of back in two thousand and three and four, that was like the Camelot period, because we had an increase of eight to ten percent on our tax base, likewise in sales taxes, and our mill levy decreased for five or six years. And now we're on an upswing. And for the last five or six years, we've increased somewhat every year that general fund mill levy. If I add in then that deficit that I showed you on the previous page, you get an idea of why these property tax increases occur. Sales taxes are flat, except for compensating use, which Commissioner Key only amounts to about four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars in revenue from those internet sales that we get. Because not every company is charging sales taxes as they should. Amazon is, I believe Walmart is now, I believe Walgreens is. And we get that money back. And the chart that I know Commissioner Butler looked at, that I put together, shows those, that that's really going up. But it's not, it's not a lot of money in terms of sell, it's part of our sales taxes, but it's not a lot. So when you look at this, hopefully what you can see is why those property taxes continue to increase. And of course, the outlook for twenty nineteen isn't any better. If indeed, we miss the mark under those nine revenue sources, buy another one point two million dollars revenue shortfall. So, it, it doesn't sound like I'm very upbeat and good news. Really, everything is going along just fine. Everybody's happy. We have a lot of smiling faces at City Hall, and we greet, greet all our customers by a first-name basis, so. So if you could, unless there's any other questions about the general fund, I'd like to move over to the bond and interest very quickly. So, for the past decade, property taxes on average have been less than ten percent of the total revenue required to make annual debt payments. You've seen this time and again. I know our, our debt is still high. Compared to a year ago, we're down to two hundred and sixty-one million. Now, it's going to go up again as we bring on new projects. And we have a, a May, the only bond issue that we'll have next, this year, in May. We won't have a November bond issue. But it's a fairly good-sized one. Includes a number of specials, thirteen special assessments of projects. Annenberg Soccer Field. It includes the rest of the improvement on the Park and Rec establishment. And Hillary, help me, something else. I have, I have a note, because she, Hillary made me a note. North Manhattan, sure, North Manhattan. Okay. So, property taxes have never been an onerous thing in terms of city debt, I don't think. We have a variety of revenue sources that make up the most of the bond and interest fund. Now, the fact that the bond and interest cash carryover has declined and is down based on our budgeted projection, that's, that's a warning sign, and it suggests that with this May bond issue coming up, which is a fairly large one, that it's going to be difficult not to have a mill levy increase in the bond and interest fund for twenty nineteen. And this is what it looks on the bond and interest fund compared to what we budgeted and compared to what our balance is. About a quarter of a million down. If you look at our actual, and then this year's projected, and twenty nineteen projected, and Commissioners, I would, I haven't talked to Ron about this, but I would make a invitation. As you have time, I know you're all very busy, to come in and sit down sometime with Hillary and Rena Neal, the young lady who is so responsible for our comprehensive annual financial report, and have them take you through what I think are some very sophisticated spreadsheets on debt. What I, I can tell you, we have our arms, they have their arms around city debt. Every aspect, without question. I think it would be an eye-opening experience and one that I would encourage you to take it, take advantage of if you have that time. But I also want to tell you that when we project things, you never know for sure when a project is actually going to get started, completed, and then subsequently bonded. We've done some things of late, because temporary note interest, and I'm of late, I'm talking about the last five years or so, temporary note interest has been so low that we have just routinely now hold on to our temporary notes for three years. Under Kansas law, they have to be converted to bonds after four years. Well, to meet that four-year deadline, we have to start the bonding process after three years. So after thirty-six months, we start the process, and it's anywhere from forty-two to forty-five months out. But before that four-year period is up, that we convert those temporary notes to bonds. But I can tell you, and, and Rob could probably speak to this, there are so many things that affect these projects and the timing of them and how they're going to be done. We've obviously put together a fairly sophisticated, I know Rob and Jason Hilders, our deputy city manager have, on those two proposed facilities from the recently passed Park and Facilities and Trails sales tax. And the idea is that we're, we're going to time these so that we have a minimal impact on debt and on the city. It's, it makes sense. And I, but the sophistication that the staff back here, including Rena Neal do, I would encourage you to take a look at that sometime if you have the, if you have the time to spend. It won't take long, but I think it'll be very worthwhile to look at that process. This is what it looks like. This is a moving target, somewhat this year, certainly twenty nineteen. But I think part of what we're saying is that it's going to be awfully hard to avoid a mill levy increase. And you can see what's been happening here now. In, in twenty seventeen, the mill levy went down. You have to remember too, Commissioners, that your city manager, and in fact, all of city staff, are very sensitive to what you say about spending and those mill levies as we unfold, in this case, the twenty nineteen budget. When I talk to my, our rating agencies, sometimes I think they're a little frustrated because they can't understand why the impact and the focus is so much on property taxes and mill levies. Because for them, it's consistency. It's saying you do these things consistently. And we tend to try to keep that mill levy down as much as we can and use whatever available cash we have to do so. And that's part of what has happened in twenty seventeen. We pay a price then, back in twenty eighteen. And my best guess at this point is, there's going to be another increase in the bond and interest fund in twenty nineteen as well.
I want to just focus on one item on that. Is half a million dollars of that increase projected because of the conference center? That we had the discussion last year on, I mean, we split.
It had, it had an impact, I don't know.
Not, not totally.
Have you figured in the whole half million there on that?
No, because we split it, remember?
Well, we did, we did last year, but I mean, this, this projection, is it assuming all of it's going on to the bond and interest fund and will be paid for out of mill levy?
In nineteen, in twenty nineteen?
You're correct, Commissioner. So, as of yet, we haven't had direction to move any special revenue funds into the twenty nineteen bond and interest fund to support that payment.
Yeah, so that's a good assumption, that all of it would come out of there, but that's why I'm bringing it up, because my assumption is, no, we shouldn't do that. And then you don't have to be saying we need a mill levy increase, because you can take it out of that seven million dollar Economic Development Fund, which I've always believed should have paid for that conference center to begin with. And then that takes care of the issue, a large part of it. Half a million dollars is a big chunk of that.
Now, Bernie, in our notes, maybe I misinterpreted. I think on page three of the documents that were sent to us, it said the fading cash balance declined. One point five million for the bond and interest. So, are you saying we, we make, how much are you saying we need to make up?
In the bond interest fund?
Yeah.
We don't know at this point, Commissioner, for sure. We, we really don't.
Okay.
Between twenty sixteen and seventeen, we had about the same amount of principal and interest. And I'm kind of looking ahead here on the, when you go down to the chart that's going to follow this, and you look at the amount of debt we have outstanding. So, between sixteen and seventeen, the the property tax, well, let's see, let's, the principal and interest remained about the same. So the total temp note principal and interest was in the forty thousands. So when we get to eighteen, and we go up five hundred thousand dollars in total principal and interest, and then we go up two hundred and thirty thousand or so in total temp note principal and interest. What causes that jump?
On, in twenty nineteen?
In, well, it says eighteen. And the projection is another three hundred and fifty thousand for nineteen.
Yeah, it, oh, good, she's on her way.
So I assume it's, it's, it's a, just the number of projects we have out that have.
It is.
It's the number of projects that we have out, Commissioner, as well as this number is the number in the bond and interest fund that varies the most. We have quarterly project status meetings with each of the departments. And after each one of those meetings, this fund changes completely because we get updates on where the project is, everything that's in CIP, and where, when they see construction starting, design starting. So, this is one of those areas that can fluctuate very greatly between now and when we come and see you in May.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was trying to cope with, because the next slide is the, when you get to that, I mean, this says in essence that you have to spend, you have to incur more than twenty million dollars of debt annually in order to stay at the same level. In other words, it'll go down unless you spend over twenty million dollars in debt a year.
Well, I understand too, Commissioner, that we say that it would stay, it would stay, but we're, we're paying off too.
Right.
So, and that's in the bond, if you notice in the bond and interest fund in the budget book, we have a little table there that shows debt issued, debt retired.
Right.
And like Hillary said, it depends on the timing of so many of these projects when this occurs. What we wanted to show you on this particular slide is that, obviously, if you issue no new debt in six years, you're, you notice you're reducing your total outstanding debt by over, right at a hundred thousand. And if you play this on out, it goes away rather quickly, because so much of our debt is issued only for ten years. It's fairly aggressive, but rating agencies. It's fairly aggressive, but rating agencies, of course, they love that because it means you're not trying to stretch things out unnecessarily to 15- or 20-year bond issues and you're paying your debt off as quick as you possibly can.
The point I was wanting to make here is that if we took some, let's say we're going somewhere in the midpoint between 10 and 15 million dollars of new debt every year, you're still reducing overall debt out to the end of your chart.
Yes, you are.
So, what would cause, unless there's a rate increase, what would cause us to have to put more property tax against this debt?
Well, it depends on the amount of cash carryover that you have. And that's a big issue. Sales taxes, although we don't put as much sales tax in the bond interest fund as we used to, but that can play a role. And back in those early days, back in what I call that Camelot period, we were doing that. And it kept that bond and interest levy declining instead of going up. So, there's a number of different factors, I think, Commissioner, that can change this and can make that property tax levy change as well. If it were me, I would try to keep that property tax levy as consistent as possible, given other revenue sources that can help out, especially like sales taxes and those ending cash balances every year.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I was, when I looked at this chart, I was having a lot of trouble with the previous chart, trying to figure out why we would have $500,000 difference, but but it's indeterminate, is that right? It's yet undetermined.
It is, it is really undetermined at this point.
Some of those projects, you might recall, that we're issuing temp notes for and we talked about when it comes time to issue the permanent financing for is determining where we're going to ultimately pay for those projects, out of what revenue sources. You know, and I guess I'll use, you have some very large projects. One's the Dennison-Marlack project, which is a joint project with Riley County, one that is primarily, could probably be, I mean, we're temp noting that, so that decision is postponed for a few years, but could come from property taxes because it really wasn't eligible for grant sources in that aspect. Probably a better one would be the West Anderson project, where when we forecasted that, we forecasted a number of different areas and I think we've got seven revenue sources we're projecting to help pay for that, in order to minimize the impact on the, on property taxes. So, we're using some of our special street and highway funds. You know, a couple of years ago, prior to the two-tent sales tax for street maintenance, we were using our gas tax money, our special street and highway money for some debt service projects to match grants and that sort of thing. And we've tried to put more of that back into our streets and we're using more of our bond and interest fund to match some of those grants on a preliminary basis. So, you know, where you end up juggling that is probably, and that's something that I've talked to our staff about, is when we're, when we're asking you to approve a project and issuing temp notes, talk more about long-range funding components.
Well, you know, Bernie, we asked some time ago for that kind of a look. So, when you look in the charts that Bernie has, you can see temp notes plus existing debt and have some kind of, and then the chart says what the forecast is when that changes from temporary notes to bonds. So, you can see whether or not you're driving it up or letting it drift down. And that's, I mean, that's kind of what's in this chart. You can look out there, I mean, every year you're adding temp notes to the bond, but in this scenario, you can see what might happen at various levels of continued debt.
It does, and of course, you've seen this graph before, I mean, the trend line, no matter how you cut this, with the exception of 20 years or $20 million, if you'll notice, that goes up. But anything at five to 10 would suggest that we can still see a reduction in our overall bond and interest amount, even though we're still doing projects. But a lot of that, again, always depends on the timing and everything as to how it's going to impact the bond and interest fund that given year.
Well, I would say we just, we do have some control, and Ron, you hit on it. I mean, when you have these projects coming up, some are not emergencies. They're simply things that the city needs to do over time to get accomplished. So, to the degree you can manage those in time, then you reduce the risk of driving up property tax because you chew them a bite at a time.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
This last slide, I want to point out, it gives you an idea again. I don't know if that sliver is quite in proportion, but it's larger than the other two slivers, so I would presume it's reflective of how little property taxes affect the overall debt of the city. And I should add too, Commissioners, that it says general obligation bonds are pulled in, our special sales taxes, that amount is going to be pulled out, similar to our road maintenance, and we're going to have a separate fund in the budget. So that you can see, and we're going to make reports periodically to the city manager on both the street maintenance fund as well as the facilities and trails fund, so you have a good idea for the monies coming in and how it's being spent as well. Yes, it is. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for the staff or anyone else. It's kind of a quick overview, I know, Commissioners, but we're so early into the budget process. And again, as questions come up regarding revenues and especially this issue of debt, I would really encourage you to contact city manager, contact the finance department and be glad to provide that information.
I was trying, let's see, it would be on, under the general fund where you had 85%?
Yes.
And then the next slide had the pink and...
Want to go back, Commissioner?
Yeah. Yeah, that one. No, that's not it. It's the one with 29 million down at the bottom.
This one?
So, then I went to the back of this one that Gary printed out and it, I was trying to figure out the difference in the numbers for 2017. Uh-oh, Bill Reed is moving. So, in 2017 on this sheet, we had 27,620.
Commissioner, that is a month-to-month comparison, year-to-year, so that is the January financial report that's comparing the general fund of January and all those years to January of 2018.
Okay, well, this says as of December 31st, so I assume the end of year.
So, that would be the entire year as of December.
So, what's the difference between that and a 2017 actual?
It probably occurred that after this report was made, we reseeded in, so we keep our accounting periods a month open behind. So, actually, all of January, we'd still have period 12 for 2017 open. So, we probably reseeded revenues into the general fund for 2017 between this end-of-year report that came out the beginning of January and updating this for the work session.
And the same thing happens on the expenditure side, where you have encumbrances that are now released in what we call this period 13, which is the 13th month after the close of a calendar year.
What is the budget year again?
January 1 through December 31st.
Well, the thing that, one of the things that caught my eye was revenue over expense was 1.5 million.
And that was, that was the actual ending cash balance in 2017. We transferred worker, we didn't, we transferred worker comp reserve money to bring that up to something that's going to be more acceptable. See...
As well as, sorry Bernie, but as well as revenue that you all had dedicated during the airport security discussion from the reserve funds that we had from a hailstorm out at the airport from those insurance proceeds. So, that's where it came from, as well as some of the workers' comp reserve monies because in the past years, that, those funds have been transferred into workers' comp from the general fund and we have a healthy balance in that fund over what the state, the state does dictate if you're self-insured, what that, what your reserve amount is in workers' comp. So, we're well above that.
Did that find its way into the 2018 beginning balance?
Yes.
It will. Part of the reason we made that transfer too, I want to mention this because remember, we're down, or it looks like we're going to be down about 1.2 million in 17 and again, possibly in 18. We put the city manager in a real difficult position when that beginning fund balance is also down half a million. That makes it just even worse, makes it harder for him to plan ahead on how he's going to authorize expenditures as this, as 2018 unfolds. So, it's one reason why we tried to bring that up, you know, and he still is, obviously has 200,000 or so that he's going to have to grapple with in addition to what appears to be some shortfalls in some of those other revenue sources.
Well, it's just difficult for us to track the anomaly here of the 1.5 up, which should go into the beginning fund balance and then the beginning fund balance dropping. And the same thing for the carryover into 17. You know, when you see we're short 1.2 and then we're short, what was the next one?
1.2 about, yes.
So, that's part of the confusion.
It's a frustrating time and it's one reason why Commissioners, this revenue survey is usually a little bit benign. It gives you some of the bad news and some of the projections on where we think we're going to go, but we're still, we're still getting 2017 closed out. And so, it takes a while for all of this to settle. That first budget work session, everything comes into play, but obviously, as Commissioners and the city manager, there's decision points that are going to have to be made if we continue March and April before we hit that first budget work session in May. And I'm saying darn every month to our sales taxes as just one example.
Yeah. Okay, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Sure.
Like I said, I think we have to move really, really, really cautious, and I've said that earlier and I want to use stronger words, but I think we've become used to growth and right now, we're not growing. In fact, it's not only Kansas State University, but the trends are that people are leaving the state of Kansas. And so, I think we should, at least for one year, think about, you know, we have the transient guest tax and the economic development funds and other sources that we may need to use at least for one year because it's not fair to our taxpayers that live here, that are picking up the tab consistently. I understand our expenditures are going up. We're going to start looking at the RCPD budget and, you know, we'll have to hold it down as well over there. We need to think, you know, Case State went through where, we're not, I'm not saying that this is what we should do, but USD 383 and Case State, you know, they constantly look at their budget cuts and make drastic changes because they have to and they have tuition that they can increase. And now, we're seeing that that's not working. That's one of the reasons they have a drop in enrollment. So, I don't want us to have such high property taxes that people don't want to live in the city of Manhattan. If they're living in the surrounding area, that's fine, but they're doing that because they can't pay over here. So, as we look at some of these expenses, I want to do kind of what we're doing now and not look to adding more to it, adding more expenses and holding off on projects that were mentioned and maybe just slowing ourselves down a little bit until we have some growth improvement at Kansas State University or in our surrounding area. When I talked to, you know, you and Hillary the other day, there was about social services budget that might increase simply because other communities don't have those services, so they're coming into Manhattan. And I'm sure we're going to see, as far as us, what we can fund may not be as much as they would like to have, especially alcohol funds, that's been down. I'm sure last year, they had over $800,000 in request and I'm sure they're going to have something similar. And that's been down and we don't have control over that. So, I just want us to be very, very careful when we're thinking about raising the mill levy and having those conversations. If the school board has a $100 million school bond initiative in November, that's going to impact a lot of people. We have legislators that are running right now for office in 2018. I don't know what our new governor is going to do. So, there's a lot of things that are just unstable and we kind of need some stability before we start increasing our budget or thinking about what to do with our taxes. And figuring out what the new governor, whoever comes in, wants to do is going to change how we do things. So, I'm not going to say let's cut here, let's cut there right now. We'll talk about that as we move forward, but I just said, let's be very careful on what we do.
Just one more thing here. The, I think we, the expenditures against budget was 90, you mentioned 10%, but I think it was like 91.1. So, did we do that over the year kind of cautiously? You know, in the military and in other organizations, sometimes at the beginning of the year, when you're having a tough time forecasting or whether you think there's going to be a tough time ahead, you can do some 1%, 3%, 5% looks at budget control. In other words, I think I'm going to hold the budget down by 1%. I think I'm going to hold it down by 3% or whatever that number is, it's prudent. But in the case of the 91.1, did you kind of take that tack from January?
So, actually, you know, really part of middle of the year, I would say. You know, a speech I usually maybe make in September, I made in June, basically because all those sales taxes were going down and the trend wasn't good. And so, I mean, Rob's a good example. We had a lot of ITS equipment, you know, capital improvements, and that's one of the things I look for early is that's where a big bulk of the expenditures are. And so, we talk about schedule for procuring some of those items and some of those big ticket items we may need to hold off on until we see where revenues are towards the end of the year. You know, I did allow him to proceed with some of those, but it was after everything else was pretty measured and after telling everybody else, you know, they need to be careful with their continued spending, the way these revenues are showing, looking at refilling positions, that all of that comes into play as management tools in doing so. And I think, you know, the report we got today certainly wasn't encouraging from that aspect. It wasn't horrible. I mean, basically, the sales tax for check we get in February generally reflects December sales, which traditionally has been our highest check that we get. And it was off, lower than last year. So, you know, that's not a good thing from that. But you know, your point about trying to see where things are relative to deployments and those that we can do to better forecast some of our aspects, I think would certainly help us in that regard in doing all of those things. But that's where, as we obviously know, we have some challenges ahead of us, especially certain categories, how do we overcome some of those will be important discussions.
Yep.
I appreciate that discussion because when we have had a loss of students at Case State last fall and deployments, there's going to be a corresponding effect on our economy. It just has to be. And the more we can learn about what to expect based on those numbers, and I think that'd be a good idea to be able to maybe plot for every thousand students and every thousand deployed and, you know, how many months that might affect. I think that would be... affect, I think that would be really important for us. And I want to be cautious about the expenditures also, I think that's what the citizens expect of us, and so we'll be trying, and trying to evaluate those things as we go, so that we can improve the carryover for next year. I, I do have a question, though, you, in your, in the materials, mentioned the tax lid, and we probably aren't going to have a problem this year, and we probably aren't next year, but the third year out, you expect us to finally reach the point that we would bump into it?
Well, when, when Hillary and I looked at this, and I began to forecast these out, I think we both came to the conclusion, the further out we go, the more onerous the tax lid is, and it begins to, you begin to feel the constraints that are put on by the lid itself.
Right. Okay. I mean, it's, it's inevitable, I think, but I've, it's been really beneficial for us to be able to have the freedom that we've had this year and next year too, given, even given the declining revenue. So it's a good, good examination of all of our processes and accounts.
On a positive note, relative to some of those decreases, we're going to have the largest number of construction workers on Ambaf the next two years, so hopefully, a lot of their spending and, and living in the community will help bolster us, you know, and, and so that'll be something we'll, we'll try and, and, and look for as well, and, and I think we have a number of capital projects that are going on, especially at both plants, as well as some road projects and, and some of those things, so we're, we're doing some things, I think, to spur the economy that aren't necessarily dependent on property taxes as well, so those are all good things.
I just want to say one thing, I wish we can talk to our legislators and at least say, there's, we are losing five, seven point five billion dollars a year in sales tax exemptions. If we could just save one million, that would help, out of seven point five billion sales tax exemptions each year, that's something Senator Tom Hock has been working on for a while, whenever you put a sales tax exemption in, it's hard to take it out, but I think that's something we should at least encourage our legislators a little bit harder to do. One million may not seem like a lot to, to them, but it's huge for a city of Manhattan.
So interestingly enough, you brought that up, just so I didn't want to say something positive, one other negative we heard today on the LEAGUE webinar, just kind of a mid, kind of a halfway through the session type of report, and as the, the state looks to shore up some of their funding, and they look at sales tax exemptions, they have indicated there's been a desire to look at the exemptions for local units of government who buy things and don't pay sales tax, so that would be an added expense for us that we certainly haven't budgeted for, so don't disagree that there's a lot of exemptions out there, and I think, you know, one of the things is that, you know, they've talked about having a, having a committee that really looks at those, as to how, how big a necessity, and should they wipe them all off and then gradually put some back in place, but there's...
They should wipe them all off.
There you go, well, that would, that would include us.
Seven point five, yes, but if we had seven point five, if we had two million of that, it would be fine.
Yeah.
So...
Well, thank you, Commissioners, and we'll, I, I made a number of notes, now your city manager did, and we'll be getting some more information back to you, and again, would invite you to come in and, and review some of the, the debt issues that my staff is, has put together at your convenience.
Bernie, thank you very much, it's been enlightening, thank you to your staff, we appreciate your support and involvement, and we'll be talking to you, I think, a lot, maybe more than we have in past years, so thank you very much.
And congratulations on another CAFER.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron, thank you.
And an award, those are good to collect, do you have a, on your wall, do you have?
I know, it's, they're all out here, now, now instead of getting plaques, you get little buttons for the year, so, I'm, I'm sure GFOA is cutting down on expenses as well.
Buttons, okay, very good. All right, well, thank you so much, and we're adjourned.